Welcome to the Committee on Economic Development and Technology. Welcome to the Committee on Economic Development and Technology. We are here on Friday, February 7, 2025 at 10:03 and we are at Conference Room 423. We are here on Friday, February 7, 2025 at 10:03 and we are at Conference Room 423. Before we go to the top of the agenda, I want to read out some guidelines, especially for those on Zoom. Before we go to the top of the agenda, I want to read out some guidelines, especially for those on Zoom. If you are disconnected unexpectedly, you may attempt to rejoin the meeting. If you are disconnected unexpectedly, you may attempt to rejoin the meeting. If discontinued, while presenting testimony, you may be allowed to continue if time permits. If discontinued, while presenting testimony, you may be allowed to continue if time permits. Please note that the House is not responsible for any bad Internet connections on the testifiers. Please note that the House is not responsible for any bad Internet connections on the testifiers. And in the event of a network failure, it may be necessary to reschedule the hearing And in the event of a network failure, it may be necessary to reschedule the hearing or schedule a meeting for decision making. or schedule a meeting for decision making. In that case, an appropriate notice will be posted. In that case, an appropriate notice will be posted. Please avoid using any trademarked or copyrighted images. Please avoid using any trademarked or copyrighted images. And for everybody here, let's definitely have a civil hearing and try to do good for our state. And for everybody here, let's definitely have a civil hearing and try to do good for our state. Moving on to our top of the agenda item, HB 1405. Moving on to our top of the agenda item, HB 1405. Our first testifier is going to be from DBED in support. Our first testifier is going to be from DBED in support. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to our next testifier on Zoom, Hawaii Food Industry Association in support. Moving on to our next testifier on Zoom, Hawaii Food Industry Association in support. Moving on to our next testifier in Zoom, we have NFIB. Moving on to our next testifier in Zoom, we have NFIB.
Hello, Chair, committee members. Aloha, Chair, committee members. Mike Yosu, on behalf of NFIB, we stand in support. Mike Yosu, on behalf of NFIB, we stand in support. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Not in Zoom, in person. Not in Zoom, in person. We also have in person the Chamber of Commerce of Hawaii in support. We also have in person the Chamber of Commerce of Hawaii in support. Stand in your testimony. Stand in your testimony. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to our next in person, Housing Hawaii's Future. Moving on to our next in person, Housing Hawaii's Future. Moving on to Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation in support, in person. Moving on to Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation in support, in person. Stand in support. Stand in support. Moving on to Public Utilities Commission, in person, in support. Moving on to Public Utilities Commission, in person, in support. Stand on the written testimony in support. Stand on the written testimony in support. Moving on to Zoom again, Hawaii Food Industry Association. Moving on to Zoom again, Hawaii Food Industry Association. Actually, we're good now for those who wish to testify. Actually, we're good now for those who wish to testify. We have 16 testimony in support, zero in opposition, and zero comments. We have 16 testimony in support, zero in opposition, and zero comments. Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Is there anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Anyone in Zoom? Anyone in Zoom? With no comments and question, any committee members wishing to make any comments, questions? With no comments and question, any committee members wishing to make any comments, questions? All right, let's move on to our next item, HB 1406. All right, let's move on to our next item, HB 1406. We have Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation in support. We have Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation in support. Thank you. Thank you. We have DBED in support. We have DBED in support. Thank you. Thank you. We have Public Utilities Commission in support. We have Public Utilities Commission in support. Thank you. Thank you. We have in Zoom, Hawaii Food Industry Association. We have in Zoom, Hawaii Food Industry Association.
Hi, thank you, Chair.
Hi, thank you, Chair.
We'll stand on our testimony in strong support.
We'll stand on our testimony in strong support.
Mahalo for introducing.
Mahalo for introducing.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to NFIB, in person. Moving on to NFIB, in person.
Chair Mike Yosu, on behalf of NFIB, will stand in support. Chair Mike Yosu, on behalf of NFIB, will stand in support.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to our next testifier in person, the Chamber of Commerce Hawaii. Moving on to our next testifier in person, the Chamber of Commerce Hawaii. Thank you. Thank you. Hawaii Housing Hawaii's Future, in person. Hawaii Housing Hawaii's Future, in person. All right, we have for HB 1406, 16 testimonies in support and zero in opposition. All right, we have for HB 1406, 16 testimonies in support and zero in opposition. Is there any other testifiers in person? Is there any other testifiers in person? Any in Zoom? Any in Zoom? With no testimony in person in Zoom, any members in committee with questions and comments? With no testimony in person in Zoom, any members in committee with questions and comments? No questions and comments. No questions and comments. We're moving on to our next bill, HB 1407. We're moving on to our next bill, HB 1407. We have in person Hawaii Food Industry Association in support. We have in person Hawaii Food Industry Association in support.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. We'll stand on our testimony in support. We'll stand on our testimony in support. Mahalo. Mahalo.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to NFIB in support. Moving on to NFIB in support. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to the Chamber of Commerce of Hawaii in support. Moving on to the Chamber of Commerce of Hawaii in support.
Chair, vice chair members of the committee, thank you so much for introducing this bill. Chair, vice chair members of the committee, thank you so much for introducing this bill. I really appreciate it. I really appreciate it. We launched a 2030 Blueprint for Hawaiian Economic Action Plan We launched a 2030 Blueprint for Hawaiian Economic Action Plan and identified how it's challenging for small businesses. and identified how it's challenging for small businesses. Obviously, I think it's no surprise. Obviously, I think it's no surprise. We continue to be one of the worst in the nation to do business. We continue to be one of the worst in the nation to do business. But it also identified an opportunity, and that is to support a cheaper neural ecosystem. But it also identified an opportunity, and that is to support a cheaper neural ecosystem. So we really appreciate you supporting chambers of commerce, especially the neighbor island chambers, So we really appreciate you supporting chambers of commerce, especially the neighbor island chambers, where the local chambers tend to be smaller and really represent most of the small businesses. where the local chambers tend to be smaller and really represent most of the small businesses. So we believe this grant program will definitely help our small local chambers So we believe this grant program will definitely help our small local chambers in providing the services to support our local small business communities. in providing the services to support our local small business communities. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Chair Manure in support by the Chamber of Commerce. Chair Manure in support by the Chamber of Commerce. Moving on to Zoom, Kapolei Chamber of Commerce in support. Moving on to Zoom, Kapolei Chamber of Commerce in support.
Aloha, Chair, vice chair, Kiran Polk, CEO of the Kapolei Chamber of Commerce.
Aloha, Chair, vice chair, Kiran Polk, CEO of the Kapolei Chamber of Commerce.
And we stand in strong support of this measure.
And we stand in strong support of this measure.
And I would also like to add and emphasize the comments that my colleague Sheri just mentioned
And I would also like to add and emphasize the comments that my colleague Sheri just mentioned
about the smaller chambers.
about the smaller chambers.
We are a regional chamber in the fastest growing region in the state,
We are a regional chamber in the fastest growing region in the state,
and the small businesses in our region certainly need the support.
and the small businesses in our region certainly need the support.
And we just appreciate the opportunity to, you know, we're limited on resources and funding
And we just appreciate the opportunity to, you know, we're limited on resources and funding
as a regional chamber, independent, and we just see this as a great opportunity
as a regional chamber, independent, and we just see this as a great opportunity
to help our small businesses in the West Oahu region grow.
to help our small businesses in the West Oahu region grow.
We mahalo you for the measure being introduced.
We mahalo you for the measure being introduced.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any other testifiers in person wishing to testify? Is there any other testifiers in person wishing to testify? Please proceed. Please proceed. DBED with comments? DBED with comments?
Aloha, Chair. Aloha, Chair. Our position was support the intent. Our position was support the intent. Sorry if you didn't get a copy of it. Sorry if you didn't get a copy of it. We thought we submitted our testimony. We thought we submitted our testimony.
Thank you. Thank you. And please state your name. And please state your name.
Dane Wicker, Deputy Director, DBED. Dane Wicker, Deputy Director, DBED.
Thank you, Dane. Thank you, Dane. Any others? Any others? Any in Zoom? Any in Zoom? With no testifiers wishing to testify in person and in Zoom, With no testifiers wishing to testify in person and in Zoom, is there any questions or comments from committee members? is there any questions or comments from committee members? None at this time. None at this time. That's the end of our agenda. That's the end of our agenda. We will take a short recess. We will take a short recess. Recession. Recession.
Welcome back. We are back from recess and it is time for us to make some decisions. And at this time, we are on the top of the agenda, HB 1405. So the Chair's recommendation is going to be an HD1. And our First Amendment is going to add an additional requirement that could be approved, not just by two state permits to go through this process, but also those who have one state permit and one county permit can request the DBED director to initiate this process. This will open up more opportunities to go through this process and it doesn't just limit two state permits to go through this streamlined process under DBED. The second is we're gonna add a reporting schedule every year from DBED to the legislature to share the status of the program and any recommendations for improvements. We also looked over the testimony from DBED and we do understand we need positions into this bill. So we are going to add in one full-time position and a total appropriation of 125K. And we're gonna add that into the committee notes. We will blank out the FTE and also blank out appropriation. We're also gonna defect the date to July 1, 3,000. And that's the recommendation of the Chair. Any members of the committee wishing to make any comments, questions? All right, Vice Chair, please take the vote.
Okay, HB 1405, Chair's recommendations to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Holt. Representative Tam excused. Representative Templo.
Aye.
Representative Todd.
Aye.
Representative Matsumono.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Moving on to the next item, HB 1406. The Chair's recommendation is going to be an HD1. What we're going to do is we're gonna change the department where this task force is gonna be established. This is gonna change from the department from DBED to the House Legislature, where the Intergovernmental Task Force for Permit Simplification will be established. This is gonna be efforts of simplifying the permitting process. We're also gonna add a member to the task force appointed by the Speaker and that member will chair the task force. We're also gonna add to the committee notes an appropriation of 125K. And the bill already has a blank appropriation amount. We're also gonna defect the date to July 1, 3,000. That's the amendments. Is there any questions or comments, committee members? No questions, comments? Vice Chair, could you please take the vote?
HB 1406, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Any votes in opposition? Any votes with reservation? And noting the excused absence of Representative Tam, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Moving on to our last item, HB 1407. Chair's recommendation is going to be an HD1. And we're gonna change the bill from a grant process to a request for proposal process. This will make it so DBED's able to do their work on this funding. We also are going to add amendments stating that upon approval of the funding award, there shall be a match of 1 to 5, which is 20,000, and on their award of 100,000. This match will allow chambers to fundraise and organize and have skin in the game to receive that 100,000. And that will help push this effort of increasing entrepreneurs throughout the state. We will also add a blank appropriation amount. We're also gonna defect the date to July 1, 3,000. And any technical amendments needed for clarity, consistency, and style. That's the amendments. Any questions or comments, committee members? No comments and questions? Vice Chair, please take the vote.
Okay, HB 1407, recommendations to pass with amendments. Any votes in opposition? Any votes with reservations? Noting the excuse the absence of Representative Tam, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you, committee members. The meeting is now adjourned. Welcome to the Committee on Economic Development and Technology. It is Friday, February 7, 2025, and the time is 10:22 a.m. We are at Conference Room 423. Before I start off with our agenda, I do want to provide some guidance for everyone. And this is mostly for those in Zoom. Bear with me, this is something I have to do. If you are disconnected unexpectedly, you may attempt to rejoin the meeting. If disconnected while presenting testimony, you may be allowed to continue if time permits. Please note that the House is not responsible for any bad internet connections on the testifier's end. In the event of a network failure, it may be necessary to reschedule the hearing or schedule a meeting for decision-making. In that case, an appropriate notice will be posted. Please avoid using any trademark or copyrighted items. Thank you, everyone. And for those who are here in person, let's be civil and have a productive meeting. Moving on to our top of the agenda, we are now on HB 796. And our first testifier is going to be in person, the Department of Taxation with comments.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Winston Wong, on behalf of Department of Taxation. The Department has submitted written comments and testimony on this bill, available for questions on that testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to DBED with comments.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is David Kiliolo Kai. I have the incentives and exemptions manager, so I manage the Hawaii Farm Tax Credit and the R&amp;D Tax Credits with DBED. So we stand by our written testimony and available for additional questions.
Thank you. Moving to... Can somebody please? Thank you. All right. Moving on to our next testifier in person, SAG and AFTRA Hawaii in opposition.
Hi, good morning. My name is Marisha Palma Elmore, and I'm the Executive Director of the Screen Actors Guild and American Federation of Television and Radio Artists here in Hawaii. And we are in opposition to this. I stand on my testimony and also am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our testifier in Zoom, Hawaii Children's Action Network speaks in opposition.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Tax credits for working families help families afford to live here and stay here.
Did you say your name?
We are also opposed to this bill because of the sunset or automatic cuts that would put on tax cuts, tax credits. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole Wu in opposition. Moving on to Zoom, Catholic Charities Hawaii in opposition.
Aloha, Betty Lou Larson with Catholic Charities Hawaii. Catholic Charities opposes this bill because we feel it would create additional tax burdens on our residents. We know that people are leaving the state. And the shocking news is between 2021 and 2022, over 60,000 people left the state and thousands leave each year. A U W's recent report stated that 27% of all our households are worried about having to leave. And among the Ellis population, that goes up to 41%. So we feel these tax credits really are the ones that are used by workers, and they use it for paying off bills and for immediate needs. So they really do need these tax credits. And if there's some that individually you don't like, discuss that one. But I think this massive overall expiration date is not appropriate for the needs of our people. So thank you very much. And we know the legislature is looking at this issue very strongly about how to keep people here. So thank you for your concern there.
Thank you. Moving on to Zoom again with the Tax Foundation of Hawaii with comments.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Tom Yamachika from Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We would note that there is already a mechanism in place under each of its Chapter 23 where tax credits are reviewed on a five-year rolling basis, at least that's in theory, because new credits haven't been added to it since 2017. But if that's cleaned up, that may accomplish the purposes of this bill. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We have zero in support with HB 796 and we have 12 in opposition with three comments. Is there any person in the room wishing to testify with this bill? Any in Zoom? With no other testifier in person and in Zoom, committee members, any questions and comments? With no question and comments, we're gonna move on to our next bill, HB 303. We have Department of Health in person in support.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Wanda Naionishi with the Department of Health. We stand on our written testimony and support, and I'm available for questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. We have the Department of Taxation with comments.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Garrison Kurth, Department of Taxation. The Department stands on its written testimony, providing comments. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. University of Hawaii System in support.
Hi, good afternoon, and sorry for being on Zoom instead of in person. My name is Laura Reichard. I am the Director of the Hawaii State Center for Nursing. And in this particular instance, also representing the UH system, the UH system stands on its written testimony and support and is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to in-person Hawaii State Chiropractor Association in support.
Aloha, Anne Chung, speaking for Dean Shivers, representing the Hawaii State Chiropractors Association. And we were hoping if you would consider including chiropractors in the eligibility for the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Queens Health System in support. Are they in Zoom? Moving to Zoom, Hawaii State Center for Nursing in support.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Laura Reichard. And in this instance, I'm representing the Hawaii State Center for Nursing. We are one of the administrators, along with the University of Hawaii Job Som Area Health Education Center. We are very proud to have successfully implemented this program for the past five years. We have increased capacity of our health education system over time, but we also have room to grow. And so we have been in an analysis of the programs that are currently in the bill and the capacity within the tax credits. There's $1.5 million, which equates to 1,500 tax credits eligible annually. We're giving around 670 tax credits annually. And so with looking at the additional programs and specialties that would be included under the current version of the bill, there's capacity. It wouldn't, would not exceed, but then would be much more inclusive of the professions that are not currently represented. And I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the next person in Zoom, the Tax Foundation of Hawaii with comments.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Tom Yamachika, Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We will stand on our written comments and be available for questions.
Thank you. We have for HB 30317, testifiers in support, zero in opposition with two comments. Is there any other members in here today wishing to testify? Any in Zoom? With no others wishing to testify and in Zoom? Any comments or question for committee members? With none, let's move on to our next item, which is going to be HB 577. Our first testifier is in person, Department of Taxation with comments.
Good morning again, Garrison Kurth, Department of Taxation. The Department will stand on its written testimony, providing comments. I'm available for questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
In Zoom, we have the Retail Merchants of Hawaii in support. Let's move on to the next person in Zoom, Tax Foundation of Hawaii with comments.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Tom Yamachika, Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We will stand on our written comments and be available for questions.
Thank you, Tom. I'm not sure if it's your end, but you're quite soft today, and it might just be your mic. Just a note, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. My equipment's kind of old.
I hear you. So is the government's. HB 577, we have three support testimony, zero in opposition with two comments. Is there any others wishing to testify on this item in person? Any in Zoom? With no testifier in person in Zoom? Any comments from our committee members or question? Let's move on to our next item, which is HB 949. The first person is going to be in support, the Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation. Thank you. Moving on to the Chamber of Commerce in support, in person. Okay, let's move on to our next item, I mean, next person, which is going to be in Zoom, the Tax Foundation of Hawaii with comments.
And thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Tom Yamachika, Tax Foundation of Hawaii. Our comment is just technical, and we have a proposed amendment to address it in our testimony. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Is there any other testifiers in the room wishing to testify?
Hello, Chair, I'm on Zoom. I put my testimony in late, so I guess I didn't get on the list, but I am in the packet, I think.
Please proceed.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Nicole Wu from Hawaii Children's Action Network speak. We also put in comments. Looking at this bill, there's some, like, really great stuff, and there's also stuff that we're concerned about. I have four pages of testimony that over, it's a good overview summary of some of our concerns and also the stuff that we like about it. I think our number one urging to lawmakers is that we really need a better understanding of what this tax would do, tax bill would do and wouldn't do. We support the intent of tax equity and addressing the cost of living here, but we are not sure that that's what this bill would do. We hope there's a good fiscal analysis that's provided, not just to you, but to the public, so we understand what this bill does. And it looks at who benefits, who pays for it, and who benefits from it, not just residents and non-residents, but also lower-income families, middle-income families, and high-income families. The most concerning part is the 50% increase in the G E T here in Hawaii, which we know burdens lower-income families, working-class families, the most because they spend almost every dollar of their income on items and services that are taxed by the G E T. So again, a summary of a pretty long testimony, and I hope you'll take a look at my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving, is there any others in Zoom? With no further testimony in person and...
Yes.
Oh, we do have one.
Sorry.
Proceed.
Tommy Lowman, I'm the Director of Housing Policy for Sugar Creek Capital. We are in support of House Bill 949. I do just wanna make an additional comment. It does not offset the GET tax. So it is not, the tax credit is not claimed against the GET tax. Just point of clarification, but we are in support of this bill, and I am here for questions. Thank you.
Is there any others in Zoom? All right. Oh, we do have a person in here who wish to testify. Please proceed. Thank you. Department of Taxation stands on their comments. Is there any others in person wishing to testify? And last call for Zoom. With no testimony in Zoom and in person, committee members, any questions and comments? With no questions and comments, let's move on to our next item, which is HB 933. We have the Department of Taxation with comments. Thank you. Moving on to DBED with comments. Thank you. Moving on to Zoom, Tax Foundation of Hawaii with comments.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Tom Yamachika, Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We will stand on our written comments and be available for questions.
Thank you. We have testifier in person, Hawaii Food Industry Association in support.
Thank you, Chair. We will stand on our testimony in strong support, just noting that our testimony indicates multiple studies over the past several decades that indicate that taxing groceries dramatically increases food insecurity in our state. One in three individuals suffer from food insecurity. On Hawaii Island, it's 40%. So we think now is the time to take bold action. We think it's possible to fund this measure without increasing the G E T. We talk about more, that more in the very long testimony, 30-page testimony I submitted on the next bill. But please take an opportunity to read through that and just understand that this is actually a bill that would increase revenues, as shown by other states, that it would decrease food insecurity, and it would just have a lot of positive effects for the state. So thank you very much.
Thank you. That's Lauren Zerbo from HFIA in support. Moving on to the Chamber of Commerce in support. We have six testimony in support, zero in opposition with three comments for HB 933. Any other members in person wishing to testify? Any in Zoom? With no testifiers in Zoom and in person, is there any comments and questions from committee members? With no questions and comments from committee members, we're gonna move on to our next item, which is HB 959. Our first testifier is going to be Department of Taxation with comments.
Good morning again, Garrison Kurth, Department of Taxation. The Department submitted comments on this, mostly technical suggestions. I did wanna point out, we were concerned about the definitions of drug and non-prescription drugs, just maybe tightening that up to make it very clear what would be exempt. And just complex bill with lots of changes, so we would recommend it be, if passed, it'd be effective January 1, 2027. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Iron Workers Stabilization Fund in support.
Morning, Chair, Vice Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to support this measure. My name is Cody Sula with the Iron Workers Stabilization Fund. And we submitted written testimony, which we stand wholeheartedly on. All right, just wanna highlight a couple portions of our testimony to you. Reason why we put this bill together and we're supporting it is this bill represents a crucial step towards reducing the financial burden and promoting recovery and economic stability during a difficult time for Hawaii's residents. Hawaii is one of the most expensive places to live in the United States currently and imposes one of the highest tax burdens on low-income households in the nation. According to the Institute on Taxation and Economic Policy, the state's lowest-income households pay more than 14% of their income in state and local taxes on average compared to just around 10% for the highest-earning households. Also, the National Low-Income Housing Coalition's Out of Reach 2023 Report reveals that a minimum wage worker in Hawaii must work almost 100 hours per week to afford a one-bedroom rental at fair-market prices for two-bedroom residents at an hourly wage of about $44.60. Because of the high cost of living, high taxes, and lack of affordable housing has resulted in all the local families, especially native Hawaiians, being forced to move and leave their homes and families here, with a steady population decline since 2016. Reason why we help support this bill? We believe that HB 959 adopts a multi-pronged approach to alleviate tax burden and enhance economic equity by, one, exempting groceries and non-prescription drugs from the general excise tax or the G E T, removing tax liability on the first $100,000 of individual income, $200,000 for couples, and for unemployment compensation. $200,000 for couples, and for unemployment compensation benefits, increasing the minimum income threshold for low-income household renters, income tax credit from $50 to $500, establishing a Maui Recovery Fund where the first three years, $100 million would go to Lahaina to help rebuild, and also incrementally increasing the G E T rate over four years to 6%. So, we know that tax breaks and exemptions would allow families to redirect their resources towards housing and education and critical needs, going to help stimulate the economy through increasing, increased spending. Although the G E T increase over four years might seem counterintuitive, reason why we put that in is because we know the money got to come from somewhere. And if we're going to provide relief for the residents, we also kind of just kick the tax liability down the road for our kids and our grandkids. So, please, HB 959 reflects a forward-thinking approach, a forward-thinking approach to tax policy. We believe it prioritizes fairness, affordability, and resilience by addressing the regressive nature of Hawaii's current tax system. By reducing the cost of living and providing target relief for Maui residents, this legislation demonstrates a commitment to the well-being of Hawaii residents. So, I strongly urge the committee to support this bill and recommend its passage to ensure a more equitable and prosperous future for the people of Hawaii. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next testifier, OPC M I A Local 630 in support.
Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, my name is Mikey Adal with OPC M I A Local 630. On behalf of Peter Ariarte, who is here today, our business manager, and the members of Local 630, we stand in strong support of this legislation. You have our testimony in front of you, so I don't feel the need to recite it, but I do want to highlight just a couple of things. It's very rare for us to comment on legislation that isn't directly construction-related, but we feel that this is construction-related. We have members that work and play and live in your districts that are suffering. They're having great difficulty making ends meet. They're leaving Hawaii in droves. Because they're leaving Hawaii, we're facing projected worker shortages that are quite large. We believe that this measure does, is a great first step in ensuring that these families can make it, that they can provide, and that they can work, play, and live. We strongly urge you to support this legislation, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you. Moving on to our next testifier, Iron Workers Stabilization Fund Local 625. We have Dwayne Baltista in support.
Morning Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, my name is Dwayne Baltista. I represent Hawaiian Iron Workers Stabilization Fund 625, under the direction of our Managing Director, T. George Paris. We strongly support House Bill 959. This bill is critical for working families of Hawaii, who are struggling under the weight of Hawaii's tax system and crushing cost of living. For too long, Hawaii's tax burden has unfairly impacted those least able to afford it. Adding to the problem is Hawaii's overpriced cost of living, especially when it comes to housing. The rising costs of groceries, utilities, and other essentials compound this issue. The result, families are moving to the mainland to find better living, cheaper living, and also jobs. This bill, House Bill 959, offers a balanced and much-needed approach in multiple angles, eliminating, first, eliminating the general excise tax essential like groceries and non-prescription drugs, providing immediate relief to the families. Remove income tax liability for the first $100,000 earned and for unemployment compensation. Third, increase the access to the low-income renters' tax credit. And fourth, establish a Maui recovery, recovery special fund to aid those impacted by the devastation of the wildfire. These measures will free up much-needed resources for working families, allowing them to invest in housing, education, and other critical needs. This, in turn, will stimulate our local economy and create a more sustainable and equitable future for our Hawaii residents. House Bill 959 addresses the core issue facing our communities and offer real solutions. I urge the committee to support this bill and recommend its passage. Mahalo.
Thank you. Moving on to our next testifier, we have Hawaii Appleseed Center for Law and Economic Justice with comment.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, and Members of the Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on this bill. We support a lot of the provisions in here-
Please say your name.
Oh, my name is Devin Thomas, sorry, on behalf of Hawaii Appleseed. And we, we do support the, many of the provisions in this bill because they would help working families with the cost of living. One, one thing that I would like to point out is that it's difficult for not only analysts, but for the public to evaluate a bill of this magnitude when we don't have access to fiscal notes, because this state doesn't have fiscal notes for bills. It makes it difficult for us to, to understand on balance how this is going to benefit people across the income spectrum. So, that's, that's just one challenge that I want to point out to folks, is that with a bill of this length, this size, it's important, we think, for the public to understand how it affects them. And it's important for everybody who's testifying in support of this bill as well. That's, that's one point that I wanted to make. Another is that we, we appreciate the discussion around tax credits and reducing tax burden. We think it's fantastic. We would urge the committee to keep this discussion going. And as far as we see it, the more conversation we can have about ways to help families through tax credits, the better, which is why I also want to, you know, humbly request that this, this committee also hear the, the number of other tax credit bills that have been introduced this session, such as the Child Tax Credit Bill, HB 694.
Stay on topic, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. I just had to make my pitch, sorry. But, but in, in short, we, we are in support of, of reducing the G E T burden on working families, especially those under the ALIS threshold. But we would urge caution around raising the G E T, even, even if it's intended to, you know, sort of offset the, the funding deficit there for, for messaging reasons as well. It seems to be quite an unpopular sentiment among the public to raise it. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Moving on to our next testifier in Zoom, we have the Tax Foundation of Hawaii.
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Tom Yamachika from Tax Foundation. We have submitted lots of written testimony, but let me say that our main concern is with raising the G E T by 50%. Many of the testifiers thus far have told you that Hawaii's tax system falls disproportionately on those least able to afford it. That's called regressivity. According to a, a number of studies that have been cited by the people who have testified, especially that one that came out of the Institute of I T E P, the Institute of Taxational and Economic Policy, I believe. The primary reason for the disproportionality and the regressivity in our state is the G E T. Because the G E T is a regressive tax. It is imposed on whatever people buy. Whenever they buy it, it doesn't care about how much income you have or don't have. It's just, it's just imposed. And, and yes, the, the bill as drafted will exempt groceries and, you know, it'll exempt non-prescription drugs. But what will remain taxable and what, and what will have a G E T increase of 50%? You got gas, you got electricity, you got rent. You got everyday expendables like toilet paper, towels, furniture. It's, and the, the cost of the tax is embedded in other products and services. So, there are going to be trade-offs. We can't really tell what they're going to be. But I, I think a, a major increase in the G E T like this must be approached with extreme caution. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Let's move on to our next person. We have the Hawaii Building and Construction Trades Council in support.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, and Members of the Committee. My name is Gino Sukwana. I'm the Executive Director of the Hawaii Building and Construction Trades Council, which represents 18 construction trade unions here in Hawaii. As although we normally testify on construction and labor issues, this issue is very important to us. It affects not only our residents of Hawaii, but our members also. As you heard, they are leaving in droves. And we believe and we are committed, the Hawaii Building and Construction Trades Council is committed to supporting or coming up with solutions to preventing that and helping Hawaii's residents. So, I'm available for questions. You guys have my testimony. Might have been late, but thank you Chair.
We receive your testimony. Thank you. Moving on to the next person, Hawaii Food Industry Association in support.
Thank you Chair. Support with amendments. So, of course, we support removing taxes on groceries and over-the-counter medications. That would bring Hawaii in line with the vast majority of states in the United States who have much lower tax burdens overall than our state. So, I think it's possible to figure this out without increasing the G E T by 50%. Our testimony is very long because actually, and I'm sorry for just cutting and pasting this massive dissertation in here, and I really hope you guys read it, but it's something I've been working on for a while regarding, you know, how do we stimulate economic growth and how do we pay for removing grocery taxes? Which, if you just kind of scroll down to the bottom of it, we have estimated the cost of removing taxes on groceries to be $256 million. And that actually, it was sort of, you can double-check the math on that because USDA actually puts out the gross, the nominal at-home food expenditure, and they put that at 5.51 billion. And then if you add up basically the Thrifty Food Plan versus our population, you get to actually a pretty similar number. So, I think this is somewhat, it, you know, Department of Taxation can, can weigh in, but I think that it's, it's a reasonable estimate, okay? So, then I also did another estimate on what would be the economic-generated tax on removing the permitting delay issue, which in my opinion is the single largest factor increasing the prices of not only groceries, but pretty much anything else in the state. So, if you were to do something like what Arizona, Florida, lots of parts of California do, where you do like a stopgap, where you say, okay, after 30 days, we're approving the permit, we can do post-audits, has to be submitted by a licensed contractor, something like that. And you calculate that based on the number of delays in each county, the cost of the construction, how, what you value the construction to be at, times the corporate tax and the G E tax. You actually get $2.14 billion in extra state tax revenue. So, it would be a monumental increase in tax revenue if you could just get rid of the permitting delays alone. We are, you know, as the U-Hero report states, we are the worst state by a long shot. You know, we're looking at three years for a lot of these permitting delays. So, it is a massive just drain on our state overall. So, we think that's the better way to raise the money. And we do just want to reiterate that increasing the G E T would make Hawaii, we're already the worst place to do business, everyone will leave. It would not be possible to function as a business. With any other state with a gross receipts tax, which is what this really is, it's not a sales tax, it's below 1%. With the one exception of certain services in Washington State and in most of the states that have a gross receipts tax, they actually exempt out the first several million dollars of income. In Hawaii, we tax every penny. You just can't overstate, I do a lot of modeling in this testimony about the impact for businesses with high expenses and low margins for the G E T. And you can tell, you know, Hawaii, even compared to the highest corporate tax state, is head and shoulders tax, tax-wise, so much worse. I mean, we're looking at like a 50% tax burden for, for corporations with large overhead, which is not unusual. So, that's my testimony. I'm available for comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren Zerbo from HFIA. And moving on to our next testifier in Zoom, Hawaii Children's Action Network Speaks with comments.
Hello Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, I apologize. I did not have enough coffee today. My prior testimony, which was 949, I got confused with, with this bill, HB 959. So, again, my apologies. I'll just reiterate some of what I said. This is a massive bill. It has some good and bad stuff. We really hope that there's an, an analysis that looks at not just like residents versus non-residents, but how this bill affects low-income, middle-income, and high-income people, and that it's available to the public to look at. As other testifiers said, we're very concerned with the 50% increase in the G E T because that is so regressive, as Tom explained. There's another part of this bill that seems to bring in revenues, which is changes to the standard deduction for personal income taxes. It basically removes some of the future income tax cuts through the standard deduction, which are in Act 46 or HB 2404 from last session. One thing to know about that is that most high-income taxpayers don't even take the standard deduction because they itemize. So, it seems, again, I would love to see a real analysis, but it seems like middle-class families would be most impacted and paying the most for this section of the bill. So, that's just one example that I had in my testimony, trying to start sussing out what all the different sections would mean to different types of people in our state. So, again, we have comments, and I hope you take a look at them. Thank you.
And that's Nicole Wu with comments from Hawaii Children's Action Network Speaks. We also have testimony in support by Marcia Palma Elmore.
Marisha, that's me.
Marisha. Apologize, Marisha.
It's okay, it's okay. So, thank you for hearing this bill, and I'm here, and you may know me in my professional capacity, and that's why I submitted testimony as me, just a regular human. My name is Marisha Palma Elmore, and I'm a mom, and I've lived in Hawaii for over 20 years. And I, the fact that the conversation is going still and has been started about the, the G E T that we pay on groceries, et cetera, I am so grateful for that. And I, and I'm also grateful to be sitting in a room with a bunch of big minds to talk and think about how we can best, you know, do what we can to help folks like me live here. And I was thinking, oh, do I want to testify with my professional hat or my other professional hat or my other professional hat as a professor? And then I realized that's part of the problem. I live in a multi-generational house with multiple jobs for all of us just to live here. And so, I'm hoping that this show of me as a human and a little bit of vulnerability outside of my professional realm will really hit hard as far as this is affecting all of us and whatever we can do to help alleviate the burden on all of us working families here. And what is, is commendable. So, thank you for hearing it, and thank you for all the smart people in the room with your amendment suggestions. And I'm just, I'm grateful that we're talking about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Marisha. Moving on to Mel Kahle in support.
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. You know, I was just going to stand on my written testimony, but you know, there's, I want to take the gloves off.
Feel free.
I worked for the Iron Workers Union Stabilization Fund, read the article this morning from Civil Beat, all kinds of stuff in there. We got Appleseed Center coming out. We got a professor from University of Hawaii. You know, picking and choosing what stuff is good, what stuff is bad. But I don't see anybody making and finding solutions to the problems that we're having and has been ongoing for years. I got family members, I got grandkids that moved up to the mainland. Cannot afford living here. Couldn't rent a home. Had a problem with not keeping a job, but stayed employed for 12 months. They work in a construction trades. They work six, seven months. Get off the job, project ends, we got rain, they don't work. So, they average six or seven months a year. We're not governing workers. We don't get that steady eight hours. So, we struggle out there. I'm being personally affected by this. My grandkids up there, with my great-grandkids up there living up in Texas, up in Seattle, Washington, just so they can make a living. This bill, I'm in strong support of, and, and this bill gives us so many tax breaks, right? First, $100,000, you don't pay no income taxes, state income taxes. You're collecting unemployment, which many of our members do. After the six, seven months of employment, they go out on unemployment. After the six, seven months of employment, they go out on unemployment, they're being taxed. They're being taxed on the benefits that they should be enjoying. There was a study done in 2021, 67,000 of our residents here, and mostly native Hawaiians, moved up to the mainland. They left Hawaii because they were out and priced out of paradise. The study also stated that we average 15,000 of our residents each year that's going to be moving up to the mainland. Why? They cannot afford living here, cannot afford rent, hard to buy food. I'm so fortunate that I got a job where I'm working at now that I can help them out. I can help some of my grandkids, I can help my daughters out. Many of us out there aren't able to do that. So we have been priced out of paradise. Many of them are the blue collar working class, hardworking people that lives in Hawaii. I strongly urge you to pass House Bill 959. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, we have 12 testifiers in support, two in opposition, and eight with comments for H B 959. Is there any other testifiers in person who wish to speak? Hold on, let's start with, please say your name.
My name is the Chair, Co-Chairs and Committee Members. My name is Cliff LeBoy. I'm with the Iron Workers Union Local 625 Stabilization Fund. Under the direction of our manager, T. George Paris, we decided to put this bill together. So we went out in the community. I'm just going to summarize, you heard all the stories, you heard all the complaints, you heard how bad it is out there. When we talked about the Building Trade Council supporting this, I just want to give you an idea of how much people supporting this bill. We couldn't get them all in the room today, okay? We're talking about the electricians, the elevators, the plasters, the insulators, the bricklayers, the plumbers, the sheet metal, Hawaii teamsters, I B W, boilermakers, painters, glazers, floor lasers, drywall tapers, roofers, operating engineer. When you put all the numbers together and look at the families and everybody involved, you're talking about 140,000 people. We couldn't get them in here today. We need you guys' help, people hurting out there, they're losing their homes, moving out. This bill that we have in front of you does not just ask you to reduce the tax on certain items. It comes with a component that will work with you and show you what you need to do to make it happen. You know, 2% taxing G E T increase in four years, that's not a lot. I can promise you guys as we stand and you guys sit here today that the G E tax bill or percentage will go up within the next three, four years. It's just how it, it's just how it goes. It has to be done. But we taking a better approach to this. We taking half a percent a year for four years. And if you look, if you do the numbers and you look at what's involved, it works out. You guys need to really look at this bill very well and not just panic because there's a G E T tax increase. We understand, you talk about G E T tax increase, no politicians want to go there. We understand that, but this is what we need to do. We're not worried about, we will support you guys in every way we can. If we need to bring 140,000 people here, we will do that. We need you guys to pass this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Jason Bradshaw, Government Relations Specialist with H S T A. I just want to thank you for hearing this bill. We believe this is going to provide vital tax relief for working families in Hawaii. We do want to emphasize a couple of points with the bill. The first point is, as one of the previous testifiers mentioned, this will bring in additional $2 to $2.1 billion for the state of Hawaii. And this is more important than ever with the current administration and the threats in federal funding being cut for the state of Hawaii. And we do need to be able to find ways to bring in additional revenue for the state. The second point we want to make is that here in Hawaii, we're losing on average about 1,200 to 1,500 teachers every year. We need to figure out how to make it more affordable for teachers. We need to be able to figure out how to raise the pay for teachers. And we do believe that this is one way to help make it more affordable for teachers and maybe be able to recruit and retain more of them in Hawaii. So thank you for scheduling this important bill, and we look forward to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. There was also a testifier in the back? And then we'll go after.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair and Committee Members. My name is Patrick Corones. I'm the President of the Masons Union Local One, the Bricklayers, Allied Craftworkers. The International Union of Bricklayers and Allied Craftworkers Local One is a trade union of over 700 ceramic tile and block masons. For nearly 70 years in Hawaii, we have actively fought to improve our members' quality of life on and off the job. Through access to fair wages, good benefits, and safe working conditions, Local One is proud to represent its members in all matters related to the construction industry while improving the quality of construction and protecting the public interest. Financial Secretary, Treasurer, and Business Manager of I U B A C Local One, Jeffrey Ranelles, who is here today, and the members of I U B A C Local One stand in strong support of H B 959, which exempts the sale of groceries and non-prescription drugs from the general access tax. Incrementally increases the general access tax over four years with the increased proceeds during certain fiscal years to be deposited into the general fund and removes the state income tax on unemployment compensation insurance of benefits. The state's cost of living continues to be burning some for its residents, and in particular for our members who are hard work, who are hard at work, doing their best to provide for themselves and for their families. The rising cost of housing and cost of utilities, groceries, and other everyday items have also increased significantly within the last five years, making the struggle even more difficult. Eliminating the general access tax on groceries and non-prescription drugs would ease the tax burden on residents and lessen the burden on our members and their families. Thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony in support of H B 959.
Thank you.
Aloha. Thank you very much, Chair, Vice Chair, and all aboard. My name is Scotty Reese Maniz. I'm with Friends of Waimea Nalo. We're a nonprofit organization. We are a workforce development program. Our goal is to always train and certify our members to going into the unions so they can be a better qualified candidate. We want to help because we feel the industry in the unions is the only way, or one of the best ways to be able to survive in Hawaii. I work with one of the largest employees out there, which is Hawaiian Electric. My family members are from Hawaiian Electric. The number one thing they say out there going on in Hawaiian Electric the last two years is one word, exodus, everybody leaving. One of my nephews personally left, and his number one comment he said was, I go, how's things going on over there? How's things making it? He said, my dollar can go farther. So I think you guys should look at some of the things that we're trying to provide. This is one of the great solutions directly impacting our employees out here. So we are in favor of the bill.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Hi, good morning, Chair. Gregory Iligan, Vice Chair Ika Kehasi, Members of the Committee. My name is Art Valentino, but I'm going to kind of interject of my testimony. I'm the Business Manager, Secretary Treasurer of the Sheet Metal Workers in Hawaii, Second General Vice President that represents the United States and Canada. So I get to, you know, I get to have the feel of what goes on in the United States and Canada. And I just came back from an economic meeting. But you know, hearing the other guys and gals here testifying, you know, I wanted to articulate and get a sense of what we're trying to accomplish. So in my mind, I feel like I'm at a cliff, I'm leaning over, and I'm extending my hands, and I'm trying to pull people out. Okay? So you know, each and every one of them represent a thread that contributes to our fabric society. And my thing right now is, I think we're in desperately, we're in need of a seamstress. Okay? So we need some repairing, but it's, for me, it's more of a humanitarian effort, and this bill provides that. So I'll continue with my testimony. I want to take this opportunity to stand before you here today in support of H B 959. I want to specifically speak about the preservation of our people and culture. This will, this bill will directly approximately impact 750,000 Hawaii residents, representing 50% of the state's total population that earns less than $100,000 annually, which includes 245,000 of our kupuna who rely on fixed incomes. Recent surveys indicate in 2023 approximately 60,000 people left Hawaii and moved to other states. The state's cost of living is a leading factor. Hawaii is ranked number one behind the District of Columbia, Massachusetts, and California on the Cost of Living Index. The leading factors of why people leaving Hawaii are the cost of living. House prices in 2024, the median home prices in Hawaii exceeds 1 million, which is double the national median price. Utilities are three times the national average price. Grocery and goods are imported, driving up prices in Hawaii. Limited economic opportunities. We experience low wages and lack of diversification. Quality of life, traffic congestion, and isolation. Loss of community and culture. Identity is deeply rooted in people and traditions. There are many ways to reverse this trend. Increasing housing availability, diversify the income, improve the quality of life, provide tax relief, emphasize cultural and preservation. These come from studies, okay? This bill covers two of the five suggested solutions to reverse this trend. In summary, my motivation is to preserve our population, our culture, and to improve the quality of life for all the people of Hawaii. Thank you for your time and opportunity to present my testimony. Thank you very much.
Morning, Chair. Good morning, Vice Chair.
Good morning.
Thank you for this opportunity to give testimony last minute. My name is Wayne Caivi, and I serve as the Executive Director for the Masons Plasters Fraternal Association. And as it was stated earlier, we don't usually come to these types of hearings, but because our membership is affected by these types of bills, I strongly support, and I hope that you guys will support too, for the reasons that you've heard earlier. I don't need to go over it, but we all know the situations that happens here in Hawaii. I live out in the Kapolei area in Hoopili, and there's the biggest population there in Hoopili is native Hawaiian in Kapolei today. And those people out there are affected by these types of bills. And I just wanted to urge you guys to support this.
Wayne, I apologize for interrupting you for a moment. It's 11:15.
Yes.
And we have 15 more minutes till 11:30. I want to let everyone know, because morning hearings must adjourn prior to floor session, not all testifiers may have the opportunity to testify. And in that event, please know that your written testimony will be considered by the committee.
Thank you.
I want to make sure you finish, Wayne, but I just want to let everyone know that we'll be cutting off testimony and moving on to making decisions on these bills at 11:30. Wayne, proceed.
I just want to summarize, sir. I just wanted to encourage you guys to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any others wishing to testify on H B 959? Any in Zoom? With no testifiers in person in Zoom, we're going to move on to the next, actually, before we move on to the next item, is there any questions?
I had some questions, if I may.
Yes, of course.
Well, just wanted to say real quick, thank you very much to everyone who came today to testify, including Uncle George, who just left the room. But I wanted to ask, I guess I wanted to say that I believe that this bill might be the most important bill of this entire session. Because what we're looking at from the federal government is massive cuts to our basic safety net. Like, for instance, just one item is a cut of maybe $1.5 billion out of Medicaid, which is healthcare for our most disenfranchised individuals. So, I mean, this conversation around revenue and how do we take care of our people, I think, is the most important question for this legislative session. And I do think that this bill deserves, it deserves a lot of attention and a lot of work. And there's some great testimony. I wanted to ask for the individuals from Appleseed or H Can Speaks, how much time do you think that you would need in order to prepare the economic models for the, for a really full analysis?
I believe they're outside, they'll be coming in.
We can circle back to it, but I know we're running really short on time.
Hi there, Rep. Pussy.
Go proceed.
Sorry about that. Hawaii Appleseed and Hawaii Children's Action Network speaks, works with the Institute on Taxation and Economic Policy, which is actually cited in Part One of this bill. They help a lot of different states during legislative session, and this is a massive bill. And so we actually have put in a request to them, but they are not, they have not been able to tell us how long it would take to do a good analysis of the costs and benefits for different types of residents here in Hawaii. Sorry that I don't have a clear answer.
Okay, well, we do have deadlines. Yeah, so today's, you know, this is Legislative Day 15. It's a 60-day session. We have 45 more days to figure this out, but I think we can get it done. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Any other committee members? With no questions and comments, we're going to move on to H B 454. First testifier is Hawaii Island Chamber of Commerce in support. We have Purple Maya Foundation in support in Zoom.
Yes. Aloha, everyone. This is Kelsey Amis from Purple Maya Foundation. Thank you for allowing me to testify. We support H B 454. We especially support the goal, the goals in the bill to pursue economic development through participation in the digital economy and through innovation and activity to reduce and mitigate climate change. We included in our written testimony the suggestion that the words "adaptation to climate change" be inserted. Adaptation includes actions to adjust and minimize the harm from the oncoming impacts of climate change, not just mitigating climate change by, which refers more to reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And we also support the funding included in this bill for H T D C accelerated programs. We, as an organization, have benefited, being able to run several of our accelerators, which support women and native Hawaiian and Pacific Islanders. It's critical to our startup ecosystem and to local businesses and entrepreneurs that we support. And as we all know, the federal funding outlook for supporting sort of targeted groups in need of equity is looking pretty bleak. So those are my comments and support. Thank you for, thank you for allowing me to testify.
Thank you. Moving on to Blue Startups in support. They are not present in Zoom. The Chamber of Commerce in support. Thank you. Holomua Collective, Holomua Collective in support.
Hi, Josh. We'll stand on our testimony in support. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Josh. Moving on to the Art Source Inc. in support. They are not present. Hawaii H C D C in support.
Hello, Chair. Members of the Committee, Wayne Illinois, Hawaii Technology Development Corporation. We stand on our written testimony in strong support. Here for any questions. You do have our written testimony outlining the impacts for this bill. I think this bill is a critical catalyst for our manufacturing industry, our advanced technology development for the state of Hawaii. And I think these are the types of activities that are really going to help promote workforce development, new jobs, and high-paying jobs for the state of Hawaii so we can have a thriving economy supporting advanced manufacturing and technology. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. We have Trung Lam in support.
Aloha Chair, members of the committee, and Trung Lam here representing Latour Bakehouse. Want to testify in support of this bill. There is funding there to support local manufacturing, which helps create good-paying jobs, keeps the cost of food down, and allows us to compete and with competitors from the mainland. So wanted to share my notes. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Hawaii Food Industry Association in support.
Thank you Chair, we'll stand on our testimony and strong support.
Thank you. We have Ann Chung in support. Thank you. Is there any testifiers wishing to speak in person? Proceed.
Aloha Chair, Matthew Sullivan from Oceanit. Just like to testify in support of this bill. This is the opposite side of some of the previous bills. And this is focused on job creation of good jobs so people can stay here with a living wage. Thank you, thank you Chair.
Thank you. Any others? Zoom? We have two in Zoom. Let's start with Omar.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Omar Sultan, Managing Partner of Sultan Ventures. We stand on our testimony and strong support. I'd like to also add, as a beneficiary, both directly and indirectly, many of our programs have been supported by HDC through some of the things that are included in this bill. And I cannot stress enough the importance of this bill in allowing programs such as ours and others throughout the state to be able to support in turn other companies throughout the state. And so, just in our program alone, we, we support small businesses, we support high-growth businesses, we support ag tech businesses, I mean, you name it. And they are generating real revenue in the state of Hawaii, which is obviously helping to create jobs as well. So very strong support, and I hope you will consider our testimony and those of others in support. Thank you.
Thank you Omar. Moving on to Mr. Sultan.
Hi. Excuse me, my name is Tarek Sultan, Managing Director of Accelerate Hawaii. Accelerate Hawaii stands on our written testimony and strong support. I apologize that we're on Zoom right now and not in person, but we're actually overseas in Saudi Arabia. So it's approaching, you know, a little after midnight over here right now. But I wanted to, to be present because the work that HDC does with their MAP SBIR accelerator programs are extremely important for the economic well-being of Hawaii. So again, I wanted to make sure I was present to show my strong support for them. Cannot stress enough how important this work is for Hawaii, the small businesses, any entrepreneurs that are the founders and business owners of these businesses. So happy to answer any questions, and I thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Well, thank you for staying up and testifying. Is there any others in Zoom? No? And no testifiers in person? We are going to move on to questions from committee members or comments? None at this time. And so let's move on to our next bill, which is HB 1176. We have Ann Chung. Actually, we have Parmac Technologies and Makai Ocean Engineering with, in support.
Aloha, Ann Chung. I represent Pacmar Technologies as well as Makai Ocean Engineering. To be brief, the local tech companies that are doing business here bring high-paying, high-value, high-skill jobs. And this is a very important bill that we hope that you will consider supporting. I do want to recognize that there are two amendments that I suggest in the bill, and I've outlined that in my testimony, to replace the first come, first served issue with a 24-hour, one-day hold, as well as deleting the performing arts section. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have Hawaii Food Industry Association in support.
Thank you Chair, we'll stand on our testimony and support. Mahalo.
Thank you. We have the Chamber of Commerce of Hawaii in support. Thank you. Is there any other testifiers in person in Zoom? With no testifiers in person in Zoom, any committee members wishing to make any comments or questions? None at this time. Let's move on to our next item, which is going to be HB 546. Our first testifier is going to be from the University of Hawaii System in, in support.
Good morning Chair, Vasile Sirimus. We're standing in, on our written testimony and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Hawaii Technology Development Corporation in support. Okay, stand on your testimony. We have three testimony in support, zero in opposition with zero comments for HB 546. Is there any testifiers wishing to speak in person? Any in Zoom? With none, with no testifiers, any committee members wishing to speak, comments? Let's move on to our next item, which is going to be HB 1370. Department of Taxation with comments. Thank you. Moving on to Maui Brewing in support in Zoom. Not there. We have six testimony in support, zero in opposition with one comment for HB 1370. Is there any testifiers in person? Any in Zoom? Any committee members wishing to speak or make any comments? With none at this time, let's move on to our last bill, HB 1372. First testifier, Maui Brewing in Zoom. We have three testifiers in support, zero in opposition, with zero comments. Is there any testifiers in person? Any in Zoom? Any committee members wishing to speak? Questions? With none at this time, we have cleared out for, for our testimony. Thank you, everyone. We're going to take a quick recess, recess. Welcome, everybody. We're back from recess, and we are going to make some decisions on this agenda. We're going to go to the top of the agenda for HB 796. The, the Chair's recommendation is going to be in HD1. We're going to defect the date to July 1st, 3000. And there's been, there's, there was a lot of opposition on this bill. I want to make sure that the Finance Committee is able to do their thing with this purview and give, give the Chair an opportunity to hear out what he wants to do. And so we're going to move this out. And is there any questions or comments, committee members?
Chair.
Proceed.
Chair, I'm going to be voting with reservations.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? Representative Tam?
Chair, I appreciate your work on this. I will also be voting with reservations. I understand the situation of our current climate and the need for state revenues, but I also recognize the, the testimony that was presented by D-Bed. But in the interest of continuing this conversation, how we're going to deal with the fiscal impacts in the upcoming year, I will be voting with reservations.
Thank you. Representative Matsumoto?
Based on the testimony, I'll also be voting with reservations on this bill, watching it as it goes through.
Thank you. With no further comments and questions, Vice Chair, please take the vote.
Vote on HB 796. The, passing with amendments, that's the.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
HD1.
With an HD1. Chair's recommendation is to vote aye. Chair, is a yes? Vice Chair votes with reservations. Representative Holt? Representative Tam votes with reservations, is that correct? Representative Templon?
Aye.
Thank you. Representative Todd?
Aye.
Okay, and Representative Matsumoto? Thank you very much. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Moving on to HB 303. The Chair's recommendation is going to be in HD1. We're also going to adopt all of DOTAC's suggested amendments from 1 to 9. We have some technical amendments needed for clarity, consistency, and style. Also, the bill does contain a defective effective date. Any questions regarding the amendments? No questions? Vice Chair, please take the vote.
Bill is HB 303, HD1. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Any votes in opposition? Any votes with reservations? Hearing none, Chair, your, your recommendation is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. We are going to move on to HB 577. The Chair's recommendation is going to be in HD1. And for this bill, it does contain a defective ineffective date. And we want to adopt DOTAC's suggested amendment to offer the tax credit less than 100% because the tax credits offered, 100% of expenditures create incentives for abuse and waste. So in the committee notes, we're going to blank off the percentage, and we'll leave it to the committee notes to investigate what would be the best amount of percentage for this bill. That's the amendments. Any questions and comments? Vice Chair, please take the vote.
Thank you Chair. The bill is HB 577, HD1, and recommendation is to pass with amendments. Any representatives voting? No. Any representatives voting with reservations? Hearing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Moving on to HB 949. The Chair's recommendation is going to be HD1, and we will adopt DOTAC's suggested amendments to Section 235-110.8b by specifying a deadline for taxpayers to report a transfer, sale, or assignment, also to the timeframe to assist with the administration of credit. Last, that effective date of the bill be amended to taxable years beginning after December 31st, 2025. We will also adopt Tax Foundation of Hawaii Suggested Amendment to replace the word taxpayer with person to prevent confusion. Also note that the word person is defined in Section 235-1 HRS to include an individual, a trust, an estate, partnership, association, company, or corporation. Bill does contain a defective effective date. As to amendments for HB 949, any questions on amendments? No questions? Vice Chair, please take the vote.
HB 949, HD1, recommendation is to pass with amendments to become an HD2. Any votes in opposition? Any votes with reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
For HB 933, this is actually my bill to also do a reduction for taxes on food, which also contains an HB 959. At this time, there's going to be more work that needs to be done with these bills. So I will be deferring HB 933 and HB 959. Moving on to HB 454. The Chair's recommendation is going to be HD, and our Vice Chair has a proposed amendment.
Thank you Chair. I'm going to be submitting language for an HD1, which would add import substitution and import replacement as another goal for the, for this legislation.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any questions on the proposed amendment? With no questions, Vice Chair, please take the vote.
Thank you. Bill is HB 454, recommendation is to pass with amendments. Any representatives voting in opposition? Any representatives, representatives voting with reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
For HB 1176, the Chair's recommendation is going to be HD1. We're also going to defect the date to July 1st, 3000. There's going to be technical amendments needed for clarity, consistency, and style. And the bill also contains a blank appropriation amount. Any questions or comments on amendments? No questions, comments? Vice Chair, please take the vote.
HB 1176, recommendation is to pass in HD1 on this measure. Any represent, any representatives voting in opposition? Any representatives voting with reservations? Chair, the recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. For HB 546, we're going to, the Chair's recommendation is to move it as is. Any questions, members? With no questions, Vice Chair, please take the vote.
Okay. HB 546, HD1, recommendation is to pass as is. Any representative is voting in opposition? Any votes with reservation? Chair, the recommendation is adopted.
For HB 1370, the Chair's recommendation is going to be in HD1. We're going to defect the date and technical amendments needed for clarity, consistency, and style. Any questions on amendments? No questions? Vice Chair, please take the vote.
Okay. HB 1370, recommendations to pass with amendments. Any votes in opposition? Any votes with reservations? Chair, the recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. For HB 1372, the Chair's recommendation is going to be in HD1 to defect For HB 1372, the Chair's recommendation is going to be in HD1 to defect the date. Any questions on amendments? No questions? Vice Chair, please take the vote. HD1.
Okay, last bill. HB 1372, recommendation is to pass with amendments. Any votes in opposition? Any votes with reservations? Chair, the recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And thank you, everyone, for your work. This committee is now adjourned.